Well, we're going to get started here. Welcome, everybody, to the December 7th, 2010 meeting of the Samamish City Council. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Don Jure.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Nancy Wyden.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Cross.
Councilmember John Curley.
Councilmember John James.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lee.
I'm here.
Guidelines student liaison.
Here.
I think Mark and John will be here, I'm hoping, shortly. No?
Not John.
So, do I have a motion to excuse John for personal?
I move to excuse John Curley for personal reasons.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is a particularly significant day in history, December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, of course, and we all know that what is now referred to as the Great Generation led us into that, led us in and through that war, and we have someone very close to that Great Generation with us tonight, so Admiral Bump, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of our riches stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, sir. Next is the approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda is approved. Next, we have Skyline Student Liaison Reports, Jenna and Justin.
Okay. So, Skyline JSA, which is our debate team, sent about thirty-five delegates to the JSA Fall State, which several of whom returned with several best speaker gravels. Those people include Lauren Anderson, Tyler Barron, Lexie Boyer, Asim Chippikadi, Travis Fox, and Max Sherman, and Alex Marber tied for the title of Mr. JSA. Right now at Skyline, we're having our senior exit interviews where all the seniors are trying to accomplish their, what is it, their culminating projects, and those are taking place on Wednesday mornings. Also, next week, we're having an Invisible Children Week, which is like hosted by DECA, and it's December thirteenth through seventeenth, and we're raising awareness for child soldiers in Africa. So, all week they'll be collecting, we'll have like change collections, and we're going to be selling, like they'll be having change collections during lunch and at basketball games, and they're also going to be selling a dollar ticket to a staff versus student soccer game at the end of the week, so that'll be kind of fun on Friday. It's from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. You get to watch all the students play the staff at soccer, and all the proceeds to everything, from everything will go towards Invisible Children, so.
Also this week, we have, it's called our Winter Wonder Week, and basically, it's just preparing us for the upcoming holidays, so our commons is fully decorated for the holidays now. We have the food drive and the warm drive going on, and this is going through the Issaquah Food Bank and the Mama's Hands Community Service Organization. On December 9th, which is Thursday, we'll be having the blood jar that's actually run by me and Jenna also, and we have about a hundred people signed up. We had about eighty-four slots, and then we have sixteen on the waiting list. And then we have also a garage sale on Saturday, and basically, anyone can bring in any goods or anything extra that you may have, and then we sell it at our school, and then it goes to our school fund, I think?
Scholarship.
Oh, scholarship fund. And we're also, yeah, so we're having the garage sale from eight o'clock to one o'clock on Saturday, and we'll be collecting at appropriate times during the school days, so December 6th through the 9th is our collection dates, and that'll be from 2:30 to 3:15, and then also on the 10th, we'll be from 2:30 to 4:30. And then we just had our Skyline State Championship Game, which we unfortunately lost 24 to 16. At halftime, it was 24 to zero, and we came back with two touchdowns, and we just couldn't get the last one, unfortunately, but other winter sports that are starting up will be gymnastics, boys' basketball, boys' swim and dive, girls' basketball, and wrestling.
And that's about it.
Yeah. So.
Thank you, Jenna and Justin.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I was in Denver, so I couldn't go to the championship game, or fortunately would.
Exactly. It was sad.
But I went to the more recent games, including the semifinals, and I think football should be five quarters for Skyline High School.
I think, yeah, they like to make really scary comebacks towards the end, to like the very last second.
Or maybe the coach should coach them in the beginning of the game and say, "Now, this is our halftime."
I know. It seems like after halftime, they always decide to start playing better, so.
But it was a great season, anyway.
Yeah, it was. It was a lot of fun.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Yeah, no problem.
Next is Presentations and Proclamations, and Melanie, the mayor's Month of Concern Food Drive Report.
Counsel, yeah, we had a pretty successful food drive. We had a lot of people volunteering and a lot of people donating, and one of those people who put in the most time and effort donating her time, donating her cars, her volunteers, is the Director of Eris Foundation, Mary Trask, and I'd like to ask her to come up here and share with you the results of the food drive, even though it wasn't a competition. But we're just sharing the results. And so, with that, Mary?
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, and the City of Samamish for inviting me to be here tonight, and I do have good news. The Eastside Month of Concern for Hunger is a month-long food drive, and it started, the kickoff day was September 25th, ran through October 23rd, and the first day of the drive is called the Mayor's Day of Concern for Hunger, and seven Eastside cities participated in this event, Samamish being one of them. Last year, even though it wasn't a competition, last year, we did come in last of the seven cities, and I was asked by Mayor Don to see if I could kind of rev it up a little bit, get a little bit more involvement, so we could have a little better showing, and I think that we did marvelously, so. But anyway, we had fun, and the kickoff day was the Mayor's Day of Concern, which was September 25th. We had close to seventy volunteers who came and helped that day in passing out flyers that looked like this. Many of you remember seeing these throughout the city, and we invited customers, grocery store customers, to donate food to families in need on the east side. And on that particular day, we collected 4,140 pounds of food and $1,613 in cash donations. And then, we also created ten drop sites throughout the city of Samamish, so that families could keep donating throughout the month, and we did weekly food drives, continued to do weekly food drives at Samamish Safeway and also QFC, and I did one at Whole Foods in Redmond as well. And a lot of businesses, a lot of schools, a lot of churches involved themselves with the drive. We, both Mailposts, the Samamish Hills Lutheran Church, the Christianist Center, Plateau Chiropractic, all three fire stations, Carson Elementary School, the city had two recycle events where we had donation barrels, the Samamish Art Commission came on board, Samamish Rotary Nightmare at Beaver Lake donated the food to Eastside Domestic Violence, but they allowed us to include some of the poundage from that food for our city drive, which was quite nice. Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, Ward Two, the Eastside Football Booster Club, Skyline Gridiron Club, the Carousel. At the Eastlake High School Skyline Homecoming Game, Sergeant Jessica Sullivan used her patrol car to load food into it, so families could donate food, so there was a real community outreach going. It was really wonderful. And the Samamish Youth Board got involved, Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer Staff, both the Skyline and Eastlake High School Key Clubs, Starbucks of Samamish Highlands, so, and I apologize if I've forgotten anyone else, but there was a lot of community involvement. But I wanted to mention three things that I think are really worth noting. One is that the Eastside Catholic, excuse me, Eastside Catholic High School filled a bus with 2,000 pounds of food, delivering it to City Hall. We had city workers transporting it to the storage unit. It was very impressive. We also had dropped barrels at the city hall, and the city employees really rallied around, and every single week, multiple times throughout the week, I was coming and unloading the barrels, so the city employees really showed their community spirit and their involvement in this. Another organization that's definitely worthy of mentioning is TLC Academy on Northeast 16th Street. Is there anyone here tonight from, oh, good, please come up and introduce yourself.
Come faceless.
Good, your entourage. I'm Mary Trask.
Hi, I'm Mary. It's nice to meet you. We'd also like to give you an additional check for $600.
Another one? Yes. Okay, I have more to talk about. They were amazing. TLC Academy created their own drop barrels at the school, and Cindy Van Wombeck was making multiple trips throughout the week and through the month to collect all of their donations, and at the end of the drive, I mean, Cindy's SUV was always filled when she left, when she left your place, and at the end of the drive, they said, "But we want to do more. We really want to do more to support the community," and so they presented us with a $600 check, and now we have another one. This is just amazing, and their hearts are definitely in the right place, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very, very much.
I know you're proud of the idea.
At the end of the drive, Samamish collected more than any of the other Eastside cities, so from coming in last, we came in first, even though it wasn't a competition. And we collected 18,486 pounds of food, and we collected $4,236.50 plus 600 for cash donations, and the Eastside Month of Concern figured that one point, let's see, how do they figure this, 1.5 pounds of food was equal to $1, and so, based on all of our actual poundage plus the food donations, we far surpassed the other cities, so we really had a wonderful showing. What's really nice about this is that the overall drive collected over 60,000 pounds of food and over $11,000 in cash, which means that we generated a huge public concern for hunger in our Eastside community, and I guess more than anything, and as Melanie and I have kind of a standing joke about, and also Mayor Don about, you know, not being a competition, but what we did want to do is really bring it to public awareness, that even though many people think of the Eastside as being very affluent and not a community or communities in need, we really do have many, many families that are already struggling or just one step ahead of the wolf. So, I think that what happened was that we really showed a community spirit for all of our Eastside cities coming together for a common cause, and I just think that we did a marvelous job. So far, the recipients of the food have been Eastside Baby Corner, Families in Need in the Lake Washington School District, and the Issaquah School District are receiving bags of food, the Y Villages, Tent City Four, which is now in Kirkland, Eastside Domestic Violence, Encompass, Friends of Youth. We've given donations to several of the pet shelters. We received a lot of paper towels, and they always have an ongoing need for those. Head Start families have received food, the Issaquah Food Bank. We're continually asking the community to please let us know of any families that they know of who have a need. We don't need to know any personal information about them. The people who tell us can pick up the food and deliver it to those families, so we can respect their confidentiality and their privacy. So, to me, this has just been a huge win, not only from the point of collecting the food, but from a volunteer standpoint, and for me, I love the fact that Samamish has so many volunteer opportunities, and we show our spirit of giving through our helping hand, and we had, as I pointed out, about seventy volunteers who came and helped on the first day, the kickoff day of the event, but since then, throughout the last couple of months, we have had hundreds of people come to our storage unit and sort the food, bag the food, deliver the food. We have 125 bags of food going to Head Start preschool families on Thursday, and those were all bagged up on Sunday. We had probably forty volunteers. The Lewis family, Cheryl, Gary, Jesse, Taylor Lewis have been in every single sorting that we've done. They're constantly there. Families like that love to bring their families together for giving time, and to me, that's as vital, by far, it's as vital as the food that we collect. We give people an opportunity to feel good about what they do and to lend a helping hand, so I view this food drive as being very successful, and I want to really acknowledge the City of Samamish for creating such goodwill, so thank you for letting me be a small part of it.
Mary, thank you very much, and it wasn't a small part. You're a wonderful, great part of it.
Well, a lot of people do a lot of, you know, a lot of small parts.
And it's great that Samamish was number one in that non-competition.
And non-competition, I know, it was. It was, it was fun. It was really fun, and I kept you in mind a lot of times when it would be fairly overwhelming at moments, and I'd think, "But I know who's supporting this," so, thank you. He was, Mayor Don was there in his little blue truck, you know, he was out delivering flyers, and many of the council people as well did that, and Don came with his truck and had it all, the little blue truck loaded with food to our storage, so it was really, truly, a community effort, and I could never have done any of it without the support of all of you, without Mel Anderson and Don Sanders. It wouldn't have happened, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mary. Nancy?
I have a question for Melanie. Tell me a little bit about the food drive at the city, and the, I understand there was a battle of something or another with the departments in vying for being the most giving.
See, I'm looking at, oh, yeah, there's someone here from Public, there's someone here from Public Works, so I have to be nice. But we did, the competition was this, that each department would pick an item off of the list of food items, so there's a list of food items, and then, because the departments are different sizes, you know, like Public Works is huge, and then Admin Services gets smaller by the day, so we're like, okay, well, it's just going to be based on the number of items that each group brings in. So, Public Works, in their genius, chose pasta.
And they counted every noodle?
And, no. No, but if you'd have suggested that, I'm sure they'd have taken that in. They counted every package of top ramen.
Oh.
Aw.
But having said that, they also donated enormous quantities of pasta, different kinds of pasta, and everybody in the whole city really, really was a big part of this food drive. They were really making it a fun competition, but also realizing they're making a difference in this community, so I was proud of the city staff, and.
Yeah.
I must say that Mary is so modest, because honestly, she puts in so many hours and so much time, and this is such a part of her, who she is. I mean, she's just the most giving person, so we are so lucky to have her in our city.
Indeed. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Resolution of the Samamish City Council Endorsing Lake Washington School District, Resolution Number 2069, proposing a capital projects levy to provide additional high school and middle school space. And Dr. Kimball, I think I saw you come in. There you are.
So, Pete asked me to just introduce this issue and let you know that this is something we've done in the past, supported this bond measure, and it does require certain noticing so that people have the opportunity, if they wish to, to come in also at this meeting, speak for and against it, and that notice was duly printed up in our paper of record and the Issaquah Press, and Dr. Kimball is going to explain the ballot measures to you, and then the resolution is before you tonight to either adopt or not, so.
And I will recuse myself.
Oh, okay.
If my wife's.
Good evening. Thank you. I presented to this council in October, and so I'm going to simply have you, give you the same fact sheet that I gave you in October, just to remind you of the issue that we have before us. As you know, Lake Washington School District is in a growth mode. We have 600 more students than we had a year ago and are anticipating 400 more students per year for the next five years. So, over the next five years, we're expecting in excess of 2,500 students, which for, if you think about from a school perspective, that's the equivalent of about five elementary schools. And so, as a result of that, we're doing everything we can to scramble to provide space for our students, and we've done a number of things that were no-cost items, if you will, to accommodate for that space, including utilizing existing space, putting up portables, which do cost us money, using music rooms, using computer labs, and converting those to classrooms, and in the fall of 2012, we'll be moving to a four-year high school system, and that will help us with the space somewhat. That helps us because currently, there's space in our high schools for about 800 students. Unfortunately, we need space for about 1,500 students, so while it helps us solve a part of the problem, it doesn't help us solve the entirety of the problem. So, with the move to four-year high schools in the fall of 2012, this levy will help us resolve the remainder, at least in the short term, of those space issues by providing us an expansion project at Eastlake High School, an expansion project at Redmond High School, and the construction of a choice school in our system on the east side of the district that will be a secondary school focusing on science, technology, engineering, math, among other things. And that extra space will help us in the short term resolve these space issues. We did run a bond in the February of 2010, that's right, I'm trying to think about the calendar year here, and that bond measure included a couple of elementary schools, as well as the modernization of Oneida High School. It needed a 60% supermajority to pass, and it received a 56% vote, and so that's why we're back again with a smaller version. This is a $65.4 million levy, requires a simple majority to pass, and it will be for the average taxpayer, somebody with about a half-million-dollar home in our district, that would cost them $13 per year, excuse me, $13 per month for the next six years. And as opposed to a bond, which is indebtedness, this is not a bond, this is a levy, so it does not require indebtedness for the taxpayer. So, any questions I can answer, and we do appreciate, of course, the council considering this measure and also your support of the measure.
Questions for Dr. Kimball. Nancy?
Explain, are these for capital costs?
Yes.
So, why is it a levy versus a bond? I mean, are you trying to get around the 60% requirement? I'm confused.
Yeah. It's, if we could do, if we could do all of our capital improvements with levies instead of bonds, we would do that. It really is driven by two things. It's driven by amount of dollars that you're asking for, because from a fiscal standpoint, it's better to use a levy rather than a bond, because you're paying interest on the bond. We bond things because the dollar amounts get so large that you have to extend that period over a longer period of time. There is an advantage, of course, from a voter perspective, in that it allows you to do a 50% simple majority rather than a 60% supermajority, but there's also some fiscal advantages. So, both of those things, you know, were factors in making that decision.
I'm still confused. I guess I'm used to seeing levies for operating costs, technology, busing, you know, short-term type costs, or not the major construction costs. Usually, that goes out to bonding.
So, in most cases, you'll find additions, for example, on buildings. In many cases in our district, you'll find those are levied rather than bonded, so the capital projects levy that we passed in 2010, you will find those kinds of projects. The exception to that is this choice school. The however is that it is a modular building, so it costs about half of what we would normally do, so again, it's a greatly reduced cost, and as a result, we can do it with a levy without increasing the tax rate pretty substantially. This is a practice that is done in districts that have a pretty decent assessed valuation, so if we look at Bellevue School District as an example, for many, many, many years, they did all of their capital improvements, including new construction, with levies rather than bonds, because they had the assessed valuation and the tax base to support it. That has not been our practice in terms of new construction or modernization. This is a little bit of an exception, because we're mixing a, an expansion project, which would be something we'd typically levy, with a new construction project, but it's such a small project, this is a reasonable approach for this particular measure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for Dr. Kimball? No? Then be, oh, Mark?
Mayor adjourned. Dr. Kimball, thank you for coming tonight. Tell us about Eastlake. I think we heard a little bit about it, but I'd like to hear some more about the work that's going to go on there.
Sure. That's, thank you. Currently, when Eastlake was built, it was built for about 1,500 students. We have about 1,250 or students, so students there today, so we actually have space for about 250, 300 more students today at Eastlake High School. When we add the class of ninth graders to that school, we will be adding another 400 to 500 students, depending upon what numbers you can at any given time. So, we've got, the plan is to do an expansion, and if you're familiar with the school, where the library is, we will do a wing that goes off of the library, that will be another bank of classrooms, if you will, that fits into that design, and then if beyond that, in the midterm, we need some additional space beyond that, then we would add additional portables to the school. We don't think we would need to do that in the short term.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Before we entertain a resolution, I think, Tom?
Yeah. I'm going to have to excuse, recuse myself from this for the simple reason that while my wife is retired from Lake Washington, she's still receiving a stipend from Lake Washington Education Association, so to avoid any conceivable appearance in propriety, I'm going to excuse myself.
Okay. We'll let you know when we're on to the next topic.
Question, Bill.
Michelle?
Will there be any additional parking created at the high school? And is there, there've been, I know we have discussed, another access from your school to the north?
Yeah. There's not a plan to do additional parking, because right now, most homes, ninth graders don't drive.
Oh, yeah, so they would be.
So, this really is to accommodate the addition of ninth graders. That doesn't mean that that won't be an issue forever, because most of our population growth right now is in the elementary grades. As those kids matriculate through the system, we may eventually need to deal with parking, but today, that's not a need. The second question you asked, however, is about the access off of Northeast Eighth. We are working with the city. I know that there's been a number of conversations, and we're working very closely with the city on what is the best way to create an alternative entrance. I believe it's under study. We certainly are open and interested in working with the city on that issue.
Great. Nancy?
I have one more question. When Skyline expanded its high school and brought their ninth graders back, they did great planning for extra parking and all sorts of things, but they forgot they would need additional playing time on the improved fields that the city had built on their property in a partnership with the school, and they came in and wanted to take away community hours or have us increase our hours, and it would have been very intrusive on the neighbors who had been good neighbors, and we felt disappointed in the school district and how they approached us. Have you given consideration, not only to the parking and other things we've talked about, but if, whether you will be requesting additional playing time on some of these fields?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we're about to build another field there, and I don't want to see something similar happen.
Yeah. Yeah. What's interesting, from my perspective, is that because there is interest on the part of the city to do an additional field, which will likely include lighting, there's a community process that needs to take place anyway. And so I think it actually gives us the opportunity to do that community process with what is going to exist in 2012, because we know what is going to exist, rather than, here's the field and then we're gonna do this later, because we, we know. Playing, field time is a very sparse commodity anyway. We know that. And so I think that our approach to that is to work with the neighbors and the city in figuring out what are the boundaries around that that we think are reasonable? When do we want the lights off? When do we want the lights on? When is okay to have traffic in the region? And then, once we build those parameters, we then distribute the time accordingly. We are finding in all of our municipalities, whether it's Redmond or Kirkland or Sammamish, that gym time and field time are at a premium, and we have to work collaboratively in order to figure out how to best distribute that time. In terms of ninth grade sports, so one of the questions is, is it gonna have an impact on field time if ninth graders are now in the high school rather than in the junior high school? What happens is that the number of ninth graders that are playing sports actually becomes smaller, because in Lake Washington, we have a no-cut policy for our junior high school sports. Well, when you get to high school, there is a cut policy. I mean, typically, you have a varsity team, a JV team, and often a frosh team. And that's unfortunate, but that is the way high school sports runs. So there will be additional field time, but it's not gonna be like 10 teams. I mean, it's gonna be one additional team for most major sports.
The question, though, came down to hours of community use for us with Issaquah, and they wanted a full hour of, I think, our three or, how many was it, three or four? It was just a few hours on, a few days a week, and it significantly cut into the community time available.
Yeah. And, and I don't know that I have the information to be able to answer that specifically tonight, but certainly, it's our desire to work with the city and our community groups. We view these as community facilities, and so we need to develop a reasonable system of prioritization and share these facilities with the community, because whether it's sitting on a Lake Washington piece of property, or it's sitting on a city park, in my mind, all of our taxpayers are paying for these facilities, and therefore, we need to treat those facilities as such.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, well, I think at this point, then, thank you very much, Dr. Kimball. And I will now take testimony from the public for or against this resolution. Is there anybody that would like to comment on this? No? We're gonna have a short meeting this evening. Okay, if that's the case, then I'm ready to entertain a motion to, for the resolution supporting Lake Washington School District proposition to be placed on the February 8th, 2011 ballot.
So moved.
John?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
One of you move it, one of them be second.
I'll do either, second or move it. Let's just move it along.
Second? It's been moved in second discussion.
I think it's important that our school districts continue to be quality and that their reputation, which is known far and wide, continue for academic excellence, and I think this helps continue that. And I think that's really at the core of our community.
Yeah, absolutely. It's almost every day we hear, when people, new people move to the community and you ask them why they moved here, well, besides the beauty and the wonderful city hall and the staff and the great council, they say it's because of the school districts. And in, in our 10th birthday last year, when I toured the grade schools and talked to the fourth and fifth graders, I was just fascinated by the engagement of our students, and it's truly remarkable. And thank you, Dr. Kimball, and all the staff at the school district for doing a great job for our children, of which we have a lot. So with that, any other comments? Ready for the question?
I guess I'll make one quick comment. I hope the public, assuming that we endorse this levy, does so as well with their vote.
Thank you.
Even if we don't, we hope they endorse it with their vote.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by your vote of five to zero, resolution number 2010-441 is approved. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public comment. Oh, there he is. Welcome back, huh?
Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one correction for the record. I had a call from my wife while I was out, and it's the Lake Washington Schools Foundation that she's getting the stipend from, not the Education Association.
Okay.
So.
Correction noted.
I lost some points with my wife for that one.
Okay, public comments. The first person we have here is Jolene Munson.
I'm Joellen Munson. I'm the branch manager with Therapeutic Health Services. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm very grateful to be able to appear before you again to thank you for your support of Human Services, and in particular, for Therapeutic Health Services. When I presented to you before, I shared that we provide substance abuse and mental health services to eastside families, and the support that you are going to be providing for our clients, we are very grateful about, and it makes a huge impact. Our clients are some of the folks that may be recipients of some of the food banks. We have active partnerships with Eastside Domestic Violence, and in fact, provide the substance abuse, as well as some childcare and parent education, to the women at one of their safe houses. And so every dollar, we are going to maximize, and we appreciate your trust that you've shown in us. I want to just share a little bit that in our lobby last month, we placed a simple grapevine wreath that said, "I am thankful for..." dot, 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 and invited our clients to participate. And if you'll bear with me from paraphrasing a couple of those, just to share some of the impact of what your financing will do and some of the work that we do. One parent said, "Thank you so much for all of the staff and your support of my sobriety. My family thanks you too." Another person wrote, "I'm able to be with my daughter now through my recovery." And we only had a little two-inch by two-inch card, but she wrote kind of a little story on it, but was very grateful for the support and just all of the ability for her to be with her daughter. And a third one, and it was, again, the whole wreath was coated with quotes, but this person said, "I'm grateful for all of the support that I've received. I'm thankful for my sobriety. I'm thankful for my life." So it's gonna be a huge, huge impact, and we're just really, I wanted to make sure to come out and personally have the chance to thank you all. And so I give back and let you have a shorter meeting as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council this evening? Nope, seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. And we have a lot of items on the consent agenda. We have a payroll for the period ending November 15th, in the amount of $248,939.78. Payroll for the period ending November 30th, in the amount of $259,382.73. We have approval of the claims for the period ended December 7th, in the amount of $1,532,000 for checks numbering 27952 through 28068. I'm not sure I have to give that much detail. And then we have the ordinance, which is the second reading amending Title 14A of the Sammamish Municipal Code. And that was the one where we're allowing the impact fees to be paid at the time of sale of the house and closing on the house. We're extending that. Item three is the approval of a GIS server for the new permit system implementation. Item four is a contract with, for OnCall Electrical with Sequoia Electrical. Five is amendment to the blueboard installation with Piedmont signs. Six is amendment to the Shoreline Master Plan, and as is seven, and basically, this is because of the extension as a result of, quite frankly, the time the Department of Ecology has taken in, in reviewing our Shoreline Master Program and, and receiving the comments and asking us to comment on the comments. Back to the Department of Ecology, we're extending our, our contracts with the, the consultants.
Not only extending, but adding money to them.
That's right. Mm-hmm. And items eight through 16 are approval of the minutes from regular meetings, special meetings, and study sessions between October 5th and November 16th. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By your vote of six-zero, the consent agenda is approved. We have no public hearings this evening, and no unfinished business, and so, excuse me, we have new business ordinance, the first reading repealing ordinance number 2010-288, which amends the 2009-2010 city budget. Aaron?
Yes, you might be pleased to hear that I have no PowerPoint for you. This is mainly a housekeeping item, a technical correction. You may recall, in November, we did an amendment to the 2009-2010 budget, and the intent of that amendment could actually have been accomplished via motion, approved motion from council. And so this, this action is repealing that amendment and hoping to clarify this issue going forward. You do have some further details on that in your packet. The other thing I wanted to note is that this action has no impact on the approved 2011-2012 budget. And with council's concurrence, this item can be placed on the consent agenda for the second reading at next week's December 14th meeting, if that is your desire.
Okay. Questions for Aaron? As Aaron said, this is more or less a housekeeping ordinance, which makes it easier for the accounting department, right? So this is the first reading of the ordinance. If there's any, no further discussion, then we'll have it placed on a second reading on the consent agenda next week. Okay?
Good, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Aaron. Okay, moving along. Next are council reports. Michelle, would you like to start?
Yes, I would. Actually, I just have a comment. I was in Denver with Tom and Dawn on a tour, but I also went, traveled home through Phoenix, Arizona. And I don't know if the news made it this far, but in surprise, Arizona has gotten itself in a lot of hot water for the way, for their fiscal management of that city, a new city that just built a $61 million city hall. And remember how we always have this double accounting, where we move things back and forth from accounts? Well, they got themselves so screwed up that they now have depleted all of the money that they had set aside for their impact fees to build roads and for future growth, and because they did not have good fiscal management for that new city. So I was, in reading the article, going, "Thank our lucky stars that we have such a wonderful financial management team in the city of Sammamish." So thank you.
So this was in surprise, Arizona?
Surprise, Arizona, yeah. There was a big article in the paper. Yeah, they got surprised, big time. And they, they blamed it on just, you know, a young finance team that didn't know municipal finance very well, and they got themselves all mixed up on all their transfers back and forth to accounts, like $61 million worth, yeah. So anyhow, Dawn asked me to report on our excursion to Denver to look at community centers and aquatic centers, and it was two really action-packed days of viewing some wonderful, wonderful facilities. And I'll just highlight, we traveled on Monday, November 29th, to Denver and spent a full day with architects that are based there, but are also, but are national architects, and they were, their Barker, Rinker, and Seacat is the name of the architects, that we viewed. Four of their projects that were fairly recently constructed in the Denver area, and the first one was in the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. And just, I'll give you just a brief, Wheat Ridge is a very similar community to Sammamish, and that's why it was chosen. And they built a lovely facility there that is, I'm looking for the square footage, I thought I had it handy. It's about, let's see, where was the square footage? A 69,000 square foot center, and had lazy water, aquatics, wonderful welcome center, you know, all the things that we have been talking about. Then we traveled to Golden, Colorado, and reviewed a community center. All of the properties that we saw with the first set of architects on the first day were all parks, city projects, city, community, recreation, and aquatic centers, and were developed by their park and recreation. So there were no partnerships that we looked at for the first group. So in Golden, Colorado, that was the same situation. It was an existing facility that had been around for a while, and these architects, it was originally built in 1990, and they did a complete remodel in '07. So another large, 55,000 square foot facility, just so you know, that had all the components that we are talking about. Then we traveled to the Pal Durbah Recreation Center, which is in the city of Broomfield, Colorado. And it was a facility that was completed in '03, and it's an 85,000 square foot facility that also included quite a rental operation, so community rooms and full catering kitchen and that sort of thing. Of the two days of facilities that we saw, we saw nine different facilities. The Pal Durbah Recreation Center in this city was my favorite. And then we traveled to Erie Community Center in the city of Erie, and Erie is kind of a new city, kind of in the foothills. We, these, all of these, on our first day, were out to the east of Denver, so Erie, it was about a half an hour from downtown Denver. A growing community right now, has a population of about 17,000, but they expect it to grow to about 30,000 people. And there's a new facility there that opened in, late in, in 2008, and it was a 60,000 square foot facility. So all of these are quite large. Along with us on that day were some people from Water Technologies, which was based in Denver, in Beaver Dam, Wisconsin, but national supplier of the pools, designed the pools, designed all of the mechanicals and state-of-the-art stuff for the pools. And that, it was interesting that that fellow that was with us that day, I saw him at the Phoenix Airport leaving to Las Vegas to go to a convention in Las Vegas. I talked to him at the airport. It was like, I'd seen him in Denver, and then he showed up in Phoenix. So, and then on day two, we traveled with another group of architects that had some projects for us to see, and they were, the architecture firm was called Sync Homes, based in Denver, but also working nationally. And they took us to take a look at some of the projects that, that they had done, and the first project that we looked at was in the former Stapleton Airport area, which was now a growing community that, when the airport moved out to its new place, all this infill happened, and they, it was, it was scheduled to open in a month, so this project was not even open. And it was for the city of Denver, was operating this project in its 57,000 square feet, and they expect to service about, a community of about 12,000 people out in that area, and overlooked a beautiful trail system and just lovely, lovely views. You could see the old tower was still, was still out there, but that one was getting ready to open. Interesting, the costs, I had great respect, after listening to their cost structure for this facility, again, the Parks and Recreation of Denver was running this facility, the cost to people to use this brand-new facility was $190 a quarter. The cost to people to use this brand-new facility was $190 a quarter, and it was going to be operated at, you know, about $2.5 million a month, I believe, and they were, their income was only going to be a million. So, the city was going to have to, was going to have to fund that $1.5 million loss.
Per year.
Per year, to keep this facility open. So, the cost structure was very interesting on that, not one that we, I think we want to duplicate here. But then we traveled out to Parker, Colorado, and these, these cities are south of Denver by about half an hour, and we went and looked at just an interesting facility, I think to amuse our mayor, but it did turn out to be a very interesting facility. It was called the Parker Field House, and it was basically a building that had fitness in it. It had two activity areas, total turf, indoor turf field, if you will, and what's called, oh shoot, I forgot the name of the, the hard-surface soccer field that they played on.
It was inline hockey.
Inline hockey, which was actually, when they built it, is now kind of on the down road, and they were thinking of converting this area into another covered turf, because there's so much interest in the, in the indoor turf. And so, we had an interesting tour of that, gave us some good ideas for maybe thinking about doing some kind of indoor turf in our city, and they are able to do pretty much a full-cost recovery with the program that they had there. So, some very interesting examples there. And then we went to another area called the Highlands Ranch, and I understand that Highlands Ranch is the largest homeowners' association in the United States. They have 90,000 people in their community, and they've been building it over a number of years, so think of Clahani by about five times, and they did a master plan for this whole area, so that for each quadrant, they actually had four quadrants to this community. There was a rec center that was built for each quadrant of this community, and so, we toured the two newest quadrants for this facility, and in their master plan, basically, they had the basic recreation center with the pool and the workout area, but then they also had, in each one of these facilities, something unique that the community would go to just that facility for, whether it was an indoor track, or it was a certain activity that the community wanted.
Indoor tennis was at one of them.
Indoor tennis was at one of the facilities.
Guess who wants that?
So, that was really interesting, and they had, in one of their facilities, had put in a, had a, one of those inline feet, activity centers for the soccer, but the use wasn't there anymore, so they had covered it up and tried to create an artificial turf surface in this area, and it was very poorly done, but that was, they were trying to redo that facility. And then, and then kind of the final surprise, as we were driving by, we saw this huge facility that the architect pointed out to us, that was brand-new in this same community called El Parker, Colorado, and it was a 135,000-square-foot rec center that was developed by a company called Lifetime Fitness, and Jesse had actually told us that they had been snooping around here in Sammish and were interested in possibly building something here, so we immediately wanted to go in and see what this 135,000-square-foot thing looked like, and we were kind of blown away. It was amazing, facility, very upscale, very country-club-like, and this company is publicly traded, and they're based in Minnesota, and apparently, they started about 10 years ago, and kind of started in the Midwest, headed south, and now they're building facilities and coming back up around the coasts, and so, that was amazing. The costs, the costs for people to belong to this club were like $60 a month for an adult membership, which was amazing, $150 for a family, had, also had an outdoor pool. Their spin room was huge, if any of you don't know what that is, that's a cycling center, and was like tiered wooden floors, had screens that came down so you could ride to like, you know, the Alps or something, and then they had like wind tunnels that would blow on you. It was, it was some pretty amazing facility, so.
It's private?
And it's privately, but the only thing that was interesting about it was, it seemed kid-friendly, but then it wasn't kid-friendly. It was the whole upstairs, no kids, over, under 12 were allowed upstairs. So, they did have a great big climbing room and indoor turf gym, if you will, but there was still kind of a sense that it was not a family-friendly place.
Did they have a lap pool in it?
Yes, it had a lap pool, and it had, it had zero-entry pool, and then it also had a large outdoor pool area as well. So, anyhow, we, we had two really, really packed days, got a lot of ideas, and I guess where we go from here, is I decided I was going to make a spreadsheet of kind of like all of my favorite things that I saw, and sort of build my own facility on a Fred, on a spreadsheet, and see where I ended up with in terms of square footage, and just see what, what that exercise does.
We still have one more tour of the north end, right?
Two more.
Two more tours?
Right. Did you, I'm assuming you took a bunch of pictures?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe at one of our study sessions.
Tom and Dawn and Jesse took lots of pictures.
Maybe at one of our study sessions, it'd be interesting to see those.
And one of the architects had an interesting sort of card deck, if you will, which I think is a good way to do this, and we talked about how we were going to go forward with focus groups from here. Their card deck was, okay, indoor running track, you know, what does that cost to build? What kind of return on investment do you get? What kind of interest? Kind of a description, some pictures, and so, that's one out of a deck of cards, you know, so then you could pick the cardio area, and that would be, you know, so much square footage, how much return on investment would you get? And so, you'd have each one of these sort of activity areas in this deck of cards with a cost associated with it, kind of what the recovery on it is, so that you could use those deck of cards, if you will, to build a facility, to put the components together. And so, that would be a great activity to do for a focus group, would be to, you know, have this kind of exercise.
Yeah, Mark, I think the three of us should get together with Jesse and do a debriefing and organize the photos and the brochures, and then, and then come to the council at a study session. Pete?
Mr. Mayor, on note, the staff is at this time planning to do that on 11 January.
That's right.
To do a. To do a presentation with photos and, and a staff, a staff discussion and council work-study session.
Mm-hmm. So, we better have our debriefing.
Better get our act together, huh?
With Anjali and Jesse before that. Yeah. John?
That's a tough act to follow, Michelle. I'm going to pass.
Oh.
No report.
Well, you should have come with us.
Oh, gosh. When you have one in Hawaii, let me know.
In Hawaii?
Just kidding.
Nancy?
Um, well, Dawn was having fun in Denver. I got asked to do a couple things as deputy mayor. It was really fun. On December 1st, we had this city tree lighting ceremony, and we had the fourth-through-sixth grade choir of Blackwell Elementary come and.
Margaret Mead, I thought it was.
What?
Blackwell.
Is it Blackwell?
No, it's Blackwell.
Oh, good.
It was with Blackwell.
It's always been Blackwell.
And it was just delightful, and then their families were all here with their little brothers and sisters, siblings, and they were all on the floor. The room was absolutely packed and packed out into the hall, and then it was just a delightful winter concert, winter holiday concert, and just so neat to see the kids enjoying that. And then the tree lit up, and they had cookie decorating and other things going on, so it was a really fun time, and the, I don't, did the fire truck ever arrive? Yeah, well, YFNR was supposed to send a reindeer truck that they were decorating, I guess, for all the seasonal appearances, and some, there were a few disappointed young men that I saw, but, anyway, that was a delightful day, and then the next day I got asked to, there was a tour also from Blackwell Elementary of kindergarteners through second graders, just some of them, I don't think all of them there, because it was, and anyway, they were doing a tour of City Hall and the police station, and all these children with big eyes, and so, I got asked as deputy mayor to tell them a minute or two about the city, and they had very interesting questions, like, what was the door for? Was there a jail associated with the police station? No, just a holding cell. Anyway, they were just the cutest little things, and it was really fun. So, that was delightful.
Nice. Thank you for doing that. Tom?
I had one more thing, and I forgot what it was.
You forgot it, though, huh?
I forgot what it was.
It'll come to you.
It'll come to me.
Okay. Just to reinforce what Michelle said earlier, we did spend two very, very interesting days in Denver and saw some terrific facilities, which, together with the touring we'd done here in the Seattle area before we left, is giving us a pretty good picture of what works, what doesn't work, in terms of both public appeal and also from the financial point of view, as we consider what we might want to do in our own community center. And speaking for myself, I found it extremely useful and very interesting to chat with these people. They were very open with us in terms of how, what they would do differently, what wasn't working, what was working, that kind of thing. With regard to the one private facility we did visit, Michelle, if I'm right, the message we got there was that this kind of facility can actually coexist with a, a public facility as well, because the products are different enough that they may serve different market segments. This is yet to be verified, but that's kind of the takeaway I got from that particular message, and Dawn, you may want to comment on it yourself. The other, the main reason I went, though, on this trip was to attend the National League of Cities Convention in Denver. My first time, found it extremely interesting, extremely useful, in terms of getting my arms around certain issues. I attended a number of seminars, which were very informative, did a whole bunch of networking, and during one of the networking sessions, I got a tip from a lady from Nebraska that may actually play into the funding of our own rec center once we figure out how to do it. There are, apparently are grant funds available for this kind of thing that I hadn't heard of before, particularly from FEMA, where it can, where that kind of facility can double.
From FEMA?
FEMA, where that kind of facility can double as an emergency shelter, and apparently they, they will kick in funding for it. The one this lady said that they did, their facility is something like in the order of 60,000 to 70,000 square feet, and they got $400,000 tailwood for it, which I feel paid the cost of my plane ticket right there. But in addition to that, there was a lot of focus on the issues of government today in terms of funding, the funding picture, which we all have heard way too much about. The situation isn't going to get any better anytime soon, so we, we have to contend with it. We had several speakers, which were interesting. Chuck Hagel, the former senator from Nebraska, spoke about the needs of cities and the, the impact of funding on things like how you provide services, particularly in education. We had Jeb Bush, the former governor of Florida, talk, and also Robert Putnam from the Kennedy School of Government, as a two-man panel. Both gave speeches, but then they, they formed a two-man panel to deal with these issues, which were, I thought, very interesting as well. From my point of view, it was time well-spent. It was a busy four days. I came back exhausted, frankly, between all the bus-riding around to look at the various recreation centers, and this, it was a very full week, but I think very productive for me, and I hope to do it again sometime.
Good. Thank you, Tom. Mark?
I wanted to mention two things. One is tomorrow, I'm going to go to the Growth Management Planning Council meeting. They have an agenda that covers a range of policy updates that are going on, particularly related to our town center. There's a chapter on housing and language that's, I would have to say, just modestly modified, discussing affordable housing and what they think it is, and how much of meeting your housing goals should be affordable housing. I know that was a part of the discussion that we had, so I'm going to ask staff to circulate at least the housing component that's in the package this week. Action won't come until the spring, summer of next year, so it's not an immediate thing, but I think the rest of the council will be interested in that part. And then there is just some amended language on centers, which I think has always been of concern for us. The, the second thing I wanted to mention was last week attending the open house on the 32nd Street barricade. I wanted to compliment staff, not only on the patience and the level of openness that they had to answering questions and engaging citizens in conversations about this, but also the, the exhibits and the analysis, the traffic analysis shown on the exhibit, so that people could understand, under the scenarios, how their traffic in front of their house would change. I actually talked to one gentleman who was concerned about the traffic in front of his house, but actually, the traffic was going to drop in front of his house, and he still wasn't in favor of it. So, because he was convinced they would be somehow going faster, the fewer cars, but they would be going faster. So, I do think there's some opportunities. We, as a council, I think, have learned a lot over the years about traffic calming that's not well-known in the community there, and I think, and on 32nd Street, there are some techniques that we've applied in other communities that I think are appropriate to 32nd, that would keep people from using 32nd in combination with other streets as simply a bypass for the, what I'll call the South Pine Lake arterial. And I think that we should have that be part of our next conversation with the residents there, is some of the strategies that have been used elsewhere, I think relatively successfully, and for us to look at what a, maybe an A and a B plan would be for implementing some of those design features on 32nd, so that both traffic speeds and making sure that people don't start to use parts of it to, as I said, as a bypass for the Pine Lake Road, or the South Pine Lake Road. Yes?
Well, you know, when I went to the first one, one of the things that really concerned me was the perception by the people that this was their road, and that their kids could play in the streets, and I, I think that is of concern from a safety standpoint, and none of these calming devices are going to address some of those underlying issues.
Oh, I did hear some of those same comments. I also heard legitimate comment that, hey, you've got a sidewalk that stops and starts, and you've got big chunks of sidewalk over here that are only missing 100, 150 feet to connect them, you know? Where's your commitment to, you know, completing some of the sidewalk, sidewalk network? But we did also hear people saying, I like my kids to be able to play in the street, and if you have, you know, 100 more cars a day, or 1,200 more cars a day, that, that won't be possible, and, and that's true.
So, I mean, there's.
And as long as John Curley isn't here tonight, I wanted to say something nice about him, too. I, I thought that.
He's listening, Mark.
Yeah, well, maybe he is. That, I thought he did a, a good job. John James was there, I was there, I was there, along with our staff, John Cunningham, Jeff Brown. Jeff Brown. And I thought he did a good job of engaging citizens by asking them questions and trying to probe to get really at the source of their issues and concerns. And I thought he was insightful that way. He was patient, but he also was disciplined in not listening to people explain how they wanted to use their streets as a pedestrian way when in fact sidewalks had been provided. So I thought he was good and fair, but I thought he had a good thoughtful way of working with citizens to work through the, the points that they wanted to discuss.
Good. I, I think, you know, there's so many legitimate concerns, well, they're all legitimate. I mean, if it's going to change, it's, it's, I think, very legitimate. You may not agree with certain things, but it's still a very legitimate concern. But there comes a point where you, the greater public good has to get into the dialogue there. And I think addressing what the mitigations could be or would be is probably something that people also need to hear more strongly. And you mentioned the traffic calming, but the things like the sidewalk that you mentioned, I think are probably even almost more important.
Well, they, they are important, but they not, aren't necessarily perceived as a reason if they were to be accomplished to, to do this. Many times people simply want to have a cul-de-sac and to use the street to walk on. And this, that would change with the introduction of car traffic onto 32nd. So it's not necessarily designing 32nd in great detail in advance of making a decision, but it's potentially looking at the range of things that we have done, we do have drawings for and photographs of, to say, here's a range of things that we can do and then really talk about a commitment to the sequence in which we would implement this. I think people were feeling like, well, sure, maybe you have some things you could do that would be of value to either slow cars or to make sure that we don't get extra cars. But how do we know you're going to do those in a timely manner? So to me, timing and having a range of design features that are going to be discussed with the community and have them help us pick them, I think would all be part of any decision that we, we made regarding the barricade.
Good.
At least from my view.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, obviously I was out of town for this last meeting, but I did go to the first one along with Nancy and I had extended conversations with a couple of people on, on these very issues. What I did encourage them to do was to go look at what we've done on Northeast 19th. We just did a major traffic calming project there. Same situation, you had limited sight distance road which actually was a, you know, kind of a neighborhood collector road, a lot of through traffic on it, kids who like to play possibly where they shouldn't be playing, that sort of thing. But also in my own neighborhood, well, near my own neighborhood up in Hampton Woods, Northeast 20th is a project up there, is now several years old where they, they put in the mini circles and pitched the road down in a couple places. So I would, you know, I'm not trying to prejudge anybody on this, but I would encourage anybody who's watching or listening to this tonight who is concerned about this subject to go look at these places and see what, what the city's done. And perhaps this may help with some of your concerns.
Yeah. I think having some samples and examples, photographs there at the meeting might have helped people understand what we'd done and what other neighborhoods had agreed to have happen and, and had found valuable. And I think that that's something that we haven't fully explored with this community.
Yeah.
Good points. Thank you, Mark. The mayor's report, well, of course, I was in Denver also with, with Michelle and Tom and, and indeed the, the Field House was a very impressive facility which the indoor turf, Michelle didn't quite be too explicit about it, is really an indoor soccer facility. And the whole Field House with its indoor facilities and workout rooms and everything, according to the director, is, is revenue positive, covering the, covering the cost of operations. So I'm sure our city manager will be pleased to hear that about indoor soccer. At the convention, the National League of Cities Convention, I'm on the Steering Committee for Information Technology and Communications and we had our, our annual meeting of the Steering and the Policy and Advocacy Committee and, and it was very interesting. We had, we addressed various topics and one of them was cloud computing and how that might be used to help cities basically consolidate their, their server functions and put them out in the cloud instead of having a bunch of servers in the, in the city hall and ultimately perhaps reduce the personnel, not necessarily in our city. Don't get upset there in the back of the room. But it was very interesting and, and the presentation was by a lady from Google and of course they were pushing Google Apps and how to, how to take, take all this data from, from your organization and put it up in the cloud. And it was interesting, as she was talking to government people, she pointed out that Google has a special program whereby indeed all your data is out there maybe at six different server farms, but if you want it to be that way, they're all within the continental boundaries or the boundaries of the United States. So none of the data is overseas or a server farm in Ireland or someplace. It, it was fascinating to see how the technology's moving forward in, in that area. Then we also had a discussion on social media and, and this is what I've been hearing in the Association of Washington Cities also, is a real dilemma that we're coming to and that is the public records request and whether or not even a tweet, if, if we start tweeting each other, is that susceptible to Open Public Meetings Act? And it's, I don't think the law is caught up with the, the technology yet. So that's, one of the numbers that came up were, was mind boggling. In the world now, there are 500 million people on Facebook, 500 million already. And so let's face it, that's the next generation of communications. And the city, if, if we want to communicate with our citizens and be more open, we're going to have to address the, the social media. We just don't know how to do it yet. One of the other things that was brought up at the, at the committee meeting was the, the threat to the PEG channels, the public educational government channels on cable. Maybe one of the threats is social media. It's perhaps becoming a backwaters. I mean, we had, what, a half a dozen people watching our channel? Maybe it's down to two or three now. And they're all, they'll go on our website and look at it there rather than live on the cable. But what's happened is we, our committee was fighting against a national franchise saying that we should again be able to decide these things at a local level, franchise negotiation with the cable companies. Some years ago, we, we beat back the industry on that issue, so they gave up and then they addressed it at the state level. And a lot of the states now have state franchise laws and what we're seeing in those states is that some of the PEG channels are disappearing. So we don't have that state franchise in this state yet, so we're keeping that on our, on our horizon. I did go to another interesting workshop and that was on participatory budgeting. And it's a concept which was used by an alderman in Chicago this year, 49th Ward in Chicago, Joe Moore. And it's the first time in the United States that this concept's been used. What he, in usual Chicago fashion, each alderman gets $1.3 million a year slush fund for, for capital items.
I was going to say, were you going to say salary or?
No.
Called a lollipop fund?
Even more than Bell California.
It's like Seattle had, they had-
No, the county.
King County.
County used-
Had a lollipop fund. Well, his is 1.3 million a year and each year he and a, one of his staff persons goes through and decides whether they should put in more streetlights here or repave this section. This year, he decided to do something different and he went to all the organizations in the community, whether it's homeowners associations or clubs or Rotary, and invited them all to be part of an advisory council for him. And he had about 60 representatives and he said, look, I've got 1.3 million dollars and I will spend it how you, the community, tell me to spend it directly. And so the, this advisory council went out to the community and got all sorts of ideas for specific neighborhoods, like one neighborhood said, well, we've got a neighborhood park here, we really would like an off-leash park in there. And others said, well, we've got potholes here. And they came up with 36 different projects to spend the 1.3 million. And, and the, there were subcommittees explaining each project and having diagrams on them. And they, they, they took a gym and they had all these projects on the gym on a Saturday and they held a open voting to the ward, the entire ward, to come in if you're 16 years old or older. Because they wanted to go below the, the voting age, but have everybody participating in it. And they've got 1,652 people came and voted. And, and at this meeting, it was interesting, someone said, well, how many people are there in your ward? And I think it was 60,000. And they said, well, that's not a very good turnout for voting. And the response that Joe Moore said is, well, look at it this way. Last year, one person decided how to spend that 1.3 million. This year, 1,652 people decided. So they all voted, they each got, every person coming in had eight votes. And then they added them all up and figured out who got the most votes and they went down the list and the top 13 projects totaled 1.3 million and that, that's how he spent the money. So I asked him afterwards what the other alderman thought of this. And he said, well, they're not buying in on it yet. But an interesting point, he said that there's an election coming up next year and a lot of the opponents of sitting aldermen contacted me and they're going to use it in their campaigns saying they elect me and I will let you spend the money the way you want to. So the reason I bring this up, I don't want to scare you, but in some of our focus groups we might think in terms of, of having like the, the cards with the different elements to the community center in the dollar amounts and, and asking people to create a community center, vote on which elements you want in there.
With a certain budget, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So anyway, that, that was some of the highlights of my trip. Now, Mr. Interim City Manager. The interim city manager's report.
I actually have five updates, council, and one request for clarification. First of all, good news, we received word from the State Traffic Safety Commission that they provided to the city, because we cooperated with the Lake Washington School District, just over 22,000 for school zone speed limit signs and flashing lights for three elementary schools. Samantha Smith, Northeast 14th Street, Kristen McCollum, Northeast 22nd Street, Margaret Mead on 216th Avenue Northeast. The signs will be installed, they will be similar to those we already see in the Isakwa School District near Discovery School. And I just can't over emphasize, this only happened because this was a partnership with the school district and the application. We've had very good luck with Lake Washington School District in that regard.
Discovery School?
Let's ask him.
Are these like the ones that are, have just been installed in the last year or so at Discovery School?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I need some clarification, council. Let me give you a bit of history first here. On the night of November 16th, that's the night you passed the 2011-12 budget, the council considered a motion to allow 7,000 of the $70,000 that was set aside for the freight house to be used immediately for a banner, a sign and temporary roofing. That motion failed.
Right, three to three.
Well, doesn't matter, failed. Now, as I recall, the council discussed this further and gave conceptual approval for a sign and a banner, but without city funds. This recollection may not be the same for all of us, so I'm coming back for some clarification and I need your help here, Mr. Mayor. If there's a simple discussion and a motion, all I need to know is, does the council conceptually approve of some sort of signage at the freight house site?
Discussion on this. Mark?
I'd support that. I, I would like the people who are supporting it to be able to do that or-
I think the, explain why you're asking the question.
Okay. First of all, when I sat at the audience and I heard the word banner, I went, uh-oh. The city only allows banners under the side code at the banner facility on 228th Avenue Southeast. But the idea of using a couple of signs, one is indicated by the proponents of some sort of a thermometer to indicate fundraising and others to notify people that there was a fundraising campaign going on, also has some issues when you're talking about signage in residential zones. They're not legal. So if the council tells me tonight that the majority supports the concept of some signs, then the charge to the staff is to come back with amendment to the sign code to make it legal. That's why I'm asking.
Couldn't, couldn't it be like the notice signs of a project or something like?
They're, they're specifically allowed and all we're trying to do is, is make what, whatever direction you give us, legal and, and it's not a big complex sign code amendment, it's just we need to know what your desire is.
Well, I was thinking of the signage like the, you know, like the notification-
Sure, the blue board signs.
The blue boards.
Same size, but we need to make sure that if we're going to do that, it's legit under the code.
Nancy?
Two points. One, since the city owns the project to the extent it owns the building, now I understand there's now a question of whether we own the underlying land or not and that's what's, one of the things bringing this up is, but we do own right of way in front of it with a foot back from the sidewalk that exists there. So my thought was that what we might not be able to do on the house or on the lot itself, we might be able to do in, in the right of way and it might be easier to get some amendments in, in effect.
That's a great suggestion. Here's my suggestion, council. Tell me whether you as a group conceptually support the signage or not. I'll make sure if we have to come back with a sign code amendment that it comes back.
The, the other point I guess I had though was I would be very, my understanding is you're talking about signs that would be funded by the heritage people and not the city.
Non-city funds. Non-city funds.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
I would like to point out that in the budget that was approved, there is under Parks and Rec for the Heritage Society, $10,000 allocated to the, for, on professional services side. So any funding for whatever activity could come out of that as opposed to being an incremental funding.
It's my understanding that that particular line item was to do things like records, preservation and record storage?
I don't think it was defined.
I don't think that was the intent necessarily.
Well.
Well, I remember a discussion about the record storage.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what do people think? A thermometer sign and, and a sign explaining the project?
And some other kind of sign that may otherwise undefined.
Uh-huh. And it may even be, as Nancy said, a legal sign in, in the right of way up there in, just past the sidewalk. John?
Well, I just have concern because that's not the permanent location of the facility where if it's successful in being moved because they raised the funds and it sits on homeowners association land and it's not real visible from the street and, you know, we'd probably be doing them a better service if we put a little blurb on the website if we want to help them with their fundraising efforts and by putting a four by four sign that somebody's going to zip by and not read the small fine print.
Mm-hmm. Michelle?
I think the, I think they need signage there. There's a lot of people that don't know, especially new people in the community, don't understand why that building's there, who owns it. There's, there's nothing that tells you what, what's going on with that. And so, you know, having one of those, some kind of signage there that could direct people to a website to learn more information was kind of what they were thinking about doing.
Yeah, in fact, what you could have there is, if you have a four by eight sign, you could have a flyer box on it.
Yeah.
And in it, a flyer explaining-
Right.
Explaining about the project and how you can get in contact for volunteering or contributing.
I'd support that.
Okay.
I'd like a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's have a motion.
I, I move that the council authorize staff to permit a sign and that if- I, I move that the council authorize staff to permit a sign and that if there is a code amendment needed.
Two signs.
Two signs?
The thermometer and the regular sign?
The total of two signs?
Signage, just say signage.
Yeah, signage.
Yeah.
And that staff, if a code amendment is needed to implement this, that they would come back to us with a narrowly construed code amendment to, to have this permitted.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Tom.
Tom?
Before we go down this road, we need to be sure that any wording is tight enough so that we don't open the door to other unforeseen consequences here. I'm concerned that we're gonna have possibly a number of, and I don't know who they might be, of future entities show up wanting the same privilege and setting this as a precedent.
That's a good point. And of course, it may already be legal under our sign ordinance if, if, as Nancy suggested, by, by the right-of-way, it may be legal to do that.
And it's a public project. I mean, it's not just a, even a nonprofit project. It's something in which the city is the owner of the building and is obviously going to be partnering.
Right, the city has the right to put signs in the public property is what you're implying there, right Nancy?
Well, I, I, that's, would be up to staff and Bruce, but I'm saying that may, might be a workable solution because it's a city project. And it's a structure and it's right there. It's meant to inform the public about public events. So I think even if we couldn't put it on the private property, the home itself is something that we're trying to get interest in, inform the public about. And that's it.
Good. Other discussion?
I, I'm gonna go back to saying, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think it would be more appropriate to do it once the property was moved to its permanent location. And then, you know, to raise the additional funds for restoration. I, I think doing this at its temporary location, I'm not sure it's sending the right message.
Well, I have to say that I think it is sending the right message, sending the message that we want to raise funds now from the community to support actually moving it. And as Nancy had said before, she isn't interested in, in the project until they demonstrate that they're, they're able to raise matching funds.
Yeah, I...
Go ahead.
I, I think it's a chicken and an egg. I'd love to partner and really partner with the Heritage Society and see this project happen. I don't want to just have tax dollars be the source of funding. If the people really want it, I'd love to see them fundraise. And I think the signs are...
Let them have a sign.
And I think the signs are a critical element at this stage if, if, if the fundraising is a condition of moving it and investing in that. I mean, so I'm in favor of it because I think it helps expedite that. And if it doesn't happen, even with things like the signage, then we need to let go of it, but...
Any further discussion? Ready for a question? All those in favor of Mark's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That's, you said aye?
Yes.
Okay, opposed?
Opposed. Nay.
By a vote of four to two, it's approved. Why? Pete, do you have your...
Thank you for the clarification, counsel. Continuing on.
Yes, please.
East Lake Sammamish Parkway. Well, no good deed goes unpunished. After we went to press for the city newsletter for the month of December, we were notified by the contractor that due to the severe weather earlier this month, the scheduled delivery of vehicle and pedestrian safety railing was delayed. So there is going to be some further flaggers on the parkway when that railing is delivered, contrary to what it says in the newsletter article. Now, speaking of snow and ice and severe weather, I thought I'd bring you up to date on the four-day snow and ice experience we had earlier this month. We invested over $70,000 in addressing that. Payroll, much of that in overtime, fuel costs, chemical and sand costs. The project, the problem is behind us now, it's warmer weather. We're now in the process of picking up the sand which was just put on the roadway, about 300 tons worth. We're about one-third of the way through that. I'll note that rapid removal of used sand from the roadways reduces our later cost to clean our storm drains and also has a strong environmental benefit in terms of water quality, which is why we're so aggressive about getting out there and getting it picked up. Public works based on our kind of tenuous supply line for some of our chemicals, where they had to come from Spokane and they were delayed because of the closures or intermittent closures of Interstate 90 at Snoqualmie Summit, had decided to take some of our existing budgetary funds and invest in, one, a salt brine tank where we can mix up some of our own salt brine for those times where we do use salt as opposed to other chemical de-icer. And secondly, purchasing a second chemical de-icing tank. This gives us a much better comfort factor in ordering and managing our chemical stocks. And while that's not normally something we'd bring to your attention, I think it's recent enough and I want you to know that we found some areas where we can improve our operation and so we are.
Good.
Some changes to your agenda calendar, which are in your agenda, yes?
Do you recycle the sand or does it get thrown out?
You know, mostly it gets contaminated. Everything from cigarette butts and organic contaminants to little bits of tire and asbestos from brake drums and oil. So no, we do not recycle it. In some larger areas, they're able to actually truck it, which is an additional highly expensive cost to a nearby landfill and use it as part of the cover, but we're not doing that here because of the cost.
Thank you.
So where does it, where does it go?
It goes to the nearest disposal site or place where they're doing, trying to fill inland. Similar to our street sweepings when it, during the fall when it contains lots of organic leaves, it, it goes to whomever will take it.
Carry on.
Agenda calendar, the white page is in your agenda book behind your blue-green point. December 14th, we're going to add an update on the presentation of temporary artwork for the trees on 228th Avenue Northeast and Northeast Fourth. And as I noted earlier, to add to Councilmember Petiti's comments on the recreation center, we're proposing to January 11th, a work session or study session. We come back with a full staff report, photo presentations, and a chance for the council as a whole to discuss the experiences that three of you had. Shoreline Master Plan status update, the public comment period is closed. Department of Ecology has provided the public comments they received to the city and they are posted on the city website. The next step for the city is to provide ecology with a response to the citizen comments. And because this appears to be a long process, staff with my approval has already requested a 45-day extension to accomplish this from the State Department of Ecology. After the city completes the response, Ecology will provide the community and the city government with their comments and the guidance for the Shoreline Master Plan as has been put forthwith by the city council. So this is still a process that's not yet done.
So it might be three months or something from now when we, we get...
Don't speculate beyond the fact that we've asked for the 45-day extension due to our part.
Nancy, then Tom?
Has Ecology with any other city where, I know they've approved Redmond Shoreline Master Plan changes, has Ecology with any other city asked for city response to comments?
It's a standard part, and I believe it's contained in the Washington Administrative Code, that's the process to go through.
Tom?
This is kind of reminding me of Chinese water torture here, this whole process. Pete, is the, we, we just added something like $30,000 to the budget tonight with the two consent issues that were adopted for Becky Chaney and I forget what the other one was, it was the consultant. Are we gonna need to go beyond that in the future? I mean, how, this is starting to get really expensive.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Grau, who's, deals with us on a daily basis, to help us out here.
I hope not, is the answer to your question, Mr. Odell.
Is that a promise?
Yeah, I can promise that I hope not. We made our best guess, and as, as we do often with these kinds of projects, based on our experience and the depth of the comments and what we think is gonna be taken to respond to them, I'm reasonably confident we'll come in within that kind of budget. The only thing is, if our responses to the public comments require extensive revisions to our plan or our cumulative impact assessment or something else that I haven't anticipated, then I'll be wrong about that. And I'll come back and ask for forgiveness and permission.
More money.
And, and more funds. But I've, we've done our best to try to, what, what we usually do is we say, "Well, what does a reasonable response look like?" Well, let's add a contingency factor above that in our request to you, which means that we can often come in, you know, at a, at a closer to reasonable level, still have a little cushion if we end up needing it. We're already starting to work with Becky Chaney and with E.S.A. Adolfson, who was our consultant, to scope out the nature of their work so that they can get going on that, even within, using unexpended 2010 professional services funds so we can get going on that. And we're gonna hopefully have a response delivered back to Ecology if I can in January, but, but in any case, by the proposed extended deadline of mid-February next year.
Okay, thank you. A follow-up, Don. This sort of thing was one of the subjects that AWC has been taking on in the legislative committee area. And I'd like to request from Cameron and also from our finance people, at the end of this whole procedure, once we finally get there, a wrap-up of what this has really cost the city. I think it'd be useful information to have for a case study.
Happy to provide that. I was actually going through a little bit of that mental math in my head earlier tonight. So, you know, I'm doing the same exercise.
Did you get a headache?
My brain.
Mark?
I would just comment that many of the, I'm gonna characterize them as four issues that, and maybe it's three, maybe it's, it's more, that the Department of Ecology listed wanting a response from the city initially, and then we got citizen comment and testimony, are things that we did discuss at length here before council. And just as we had previously on MPDS requirements, joined other cities in a lawsuit that had considerable expense to it, it was something that the majority of the council wanted to do at the time. I was not in the majority on the votes on several of those items that the Department of Ecology has now questioned. I don't question the majority of the council's authority to work on these issues further, but I would note that the very issues that we struggled with and that were the subject of votes, some of them close votes, were in fact, some of the very items that the Department of Ecology is, raised question about with our, our ordinance. So in part, Tom, if we were to be more in alignment with the thinking of the Department of Ecology, right or wrong, that could be one way of reducing the cost. But on the other hand, council and majority had wanted larger docks, smaller buffers, some of these other items. And those are precisely the items raised by the Department of Ecology in contention.
I think the extra cost right now is to respond to public comments, which includes future-wise as half an inch of comments, isn't that correct? Nancy?
In, following up on what Mark said, you know, we made our decisions and we, I think, had a good discussion on the issues. I too, like Mark, wanted frankly, some green around Pine and Beaver Lakes that didn't come about. But basically, the majority of the council made its decision and they knew on some of the points what DOE was thinking because they'd given us some very clear position statements in their comment letters well before we made our decision-making. And the public understood that, you know, make the decisions, this is what we want. These are the positions we had. And if they come back and challenge it, we'll deal with it at that time. Well, we're dealing with it now. And I mean, you know, that's part of the decision-making process and that's part of the public participation. And so it's a good process. I mean, the one thing you can't say is people weren't heard. I mean, no matter which way the decision went, we listened to the people.
Good. Any other discussion on the calendar?
Pete?
One question, Don, for, for Pete. On the 11th, Pete, are we still gonna do the connectivity discussion that was there?
It's still planned to be that evening, so it'll be a two-item agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, is that it, Pete?
That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else for the good of the order? Nope, we're adjourned.